Anthony Pogon, position three. Position four is vacant.
There she is. Are you there, Councilor McGilvery?
Yes, I am.
Yay, perfect.
Yay, of course I, yeah, it mutates itself for some odd reason. I haven't unmuted.
Okay, we have Administrator Fritz, we have Chief White here, and Superintendent Middle just doing this. Thank you, and, okay.
And then when we get to Tara, we'll ask her to unmute.
Okay. All right.
I'm good.
Is she gonna have something to share? We need to bring her over to the panelists.
I have the slides that I put in the packet.
Okay. Okay, so the first thing I wanted to say is that in our fire department, we have a 30-year volunteer and our Assistant Chief, Zane Adams, and we went out and gave him a really cute little axe made out of wood, and headed up to him just before the meeting. They just got back from a call and may get called to another one, so we did it as quick as we could. So it's really amazing that he's given us that many years of his service and that he's been such an incredible volunteer all that time. And he's younger than I am, I don't know how he did it. He started when he was 19, and so it's pretty impressive. The next, I wanted to go ahead and do a possible appointment and swearing up council position number four. Early on, I received an application from Phoebe Skinner. She attended our meeting last month. I checked her references. She comes with good education, good volunteer experience, and I think she'll make a good council member, so I would like to appoint her to the council and would like to ask the council to make a motion to approve her. And if you want to make it easy, you can just approve, make a motion to approve the resolution.
I read the application, so I will move to accept the nomination for the appointment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So if I may clarify, it's a motion to approve Resolution R. 212207, Council City Appointment for Phoebe Skinner. Is that appropriate?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, then I'll call the question. We'll start with Council Bradley.
Aye.
And we'll go to Council Pogon.
Aye.
Councilor McGilvery?
Aye.
Council Madison?
Aye.
Okay. Council Skinner, would you please stamp up here? Did you raise your hand, please? I, Phoebe Skinner.
I'm Phoebe Skinner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of Oregon.
And of Oregon.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
As City Councilor.
As City Councilor.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
So help me God. Thank you. You may sit. Right here.
And I realize we're a little cozy, but we both have masks on, so we should be fine. And if you need to get your stuff over there, feel free to go grab it.
Okay, thank you. We now have a fourth person to vote. So may the record show that Council, our position number four is no longer vacant, and that Council Skinner is present. And it is 6:35 PM. Okay, the next item is the Gold Beach Main Street update, and they have an illness, so they are not going to be attending tonight. And we do not have a consent calendar. And the next up is a citizen requested item for Red Fish Rocks Marine Reserve. And Tara is here to speak with us about that. And I remember when the Marine Reserve were first introduced, and nobody wanted them except for Port Orford. So I'm really kind of excited to hear how things are going.
Awesome, well, good. I'm glad you're excited to hear it. Thank you guys so much for giving me a little platform here. And how could we do this presentation with the slides?
You do that slide you want to share.
I do.
I do, and I shared them with Jody.
They are in the packet, so if you want to just, you know, just go through the, just say we're on slide number one, because I don't, I'm always hesitant to do the share screen, one of the things up there, because I don't want to lose it.
Sure, no problem.
So they have copies of them in their packet.
Okay, great. And I'll just go through my little presentation here. All right, so my name is Tara Vansy, and I work for the Red Fish Rocks Community Team. We are a community organization up in Port Orford, and we do kind of events, activities, outreach, and education around the Red Fish Rocks Marine Reserve. So we've been around now for 10 years, which we're celebrating our 10-year anniversary this year, getting some activities and events planned for this year. So I wanted to put that on your guys' radar, as well as just kind of talk about, you know, the good that we've been doing in our community and, you know, extend and offer for anyone to get involved or for further involvement south of Port Orford. All righty. So a little bit of context, we're on slide two now, for just why kind of Marine Reserves are important right now. UN has declared it the decade of ocean science, and there's a global network of marine protected areas, which is crucial for scientists to help understand what's happening on a global scale. So it's not just, you know, one Marine Reserve acting alone. We're a network of Marine Reserves studying and monitoring areas of interest globally. And currently, less than 3% of the world's oceans are protected, and there's still just a lot that we don't now. So there's so much happening in the oceans, so much changing, and we've only explored approximately 5% of the world's oceans, and 94% of living species on Earth are aquatic. So I kind of went in, I'm on slide three now, why are Marine Reserves important? Number one, they are living laboratories. So up here in Port Orford, we have a really good relationship with Oregon State University and ODFW, and both of those entities help us study the Marine Reserve. We follow fish movements, amongst other things, we watch populations. So there's a lot of science happening in the Marine Reserve, and it allows scientists to take a look at, you know, what's happening without the factor of kind of human development and taking of Marine Reserve species. And it is a long-term investment in a more sustainable future for local fisheries. We really do pride ourselves in Port Orford for working with the local fishing fleet. They did propose, you know, where the reserve would be at Red Fish Rocks, and we definitely haven't forgotten their involvement. So it is, in the long-term, investment in keeping our fisheries around for future generations. Marine Reserves use tourism and connectivity. The last thing there is, again, that kind of global network of Marine Reserves, including along, you know, the entire West Coast. We're one of many, and we can monitor fish movements, fish that are tracked. We can see them moving in and out of Marine Reserves along the coast, and that helps us study kind of the overall picture of ocean movement, as well as other things like ocean acidification, and just creates a network for scientists to communicate. I'm on slide number four now, Oregon Marine Reserve Program. So you guys seem familiar already with kind of the process of making these Marine Reserves back in 2012, but it was a long time coming at that point. So we are one of five in Oregon, and we're one of the first Red Fish Rocks was established in 2010. But Cape Falcon is the furthest north, followed by Pass Gatehead, Otter Rock, Cape Perpetua, and then southernmost is Red Fish Rocks. So, all right, I'm on slide number five now, which is a map of the area depicting kind of where the Marine Reserve is, just south of Port Orford. It covers 2.6 square miles, just off of the intertidal zone, out to the rock islands, which are, I don't know, the view is known for. And it includes a bunch of different habitats, including intertidal habitat, boulder fields, emergent rocky islands, pelt forest, rocky reef, and sandy bottom. So that was part of the reason why this area was selected, is it has a great variety of biodiversity and different habitats. And it's also connected to the Marine Reserve is the Marine Protected Area. So the Marine Reserve is a no-take zone, and the protected area, fishing of Dungeness crab and salmon is permitted, but groundfish are still protected in that area. All right. So next slide, number six, the Red Fish Rocks Community Team. We are a nonprofit organization, and we're a diverse coalition of community members, including scientists, fishermen, business owners, educators, and volunteers, with the mission of supporting Red Fish Rocks Marine Reserve through education, interpretation, and marine stewardship opportunities. And we've evolved a lot over the years. Originally, we hosted, you know, monthly meetings in the community to talk about, you know, issues that people, citizens would bring to attention, or talk about ocean science. And kind of since pandemic and everything, we've evolved to now we're kind of creating content and virtual opportunities, and growing our network in that way as well. So here's a couple examples of our community engagement activities over the years. Interpretation plays a huge role in what we do. We do have a volunteer program where volunteers would stand at the Port Orford Visitor Center and just interact with the public and talk about the Marine Reserve, our history, our involvement with, you know, the different community entities in Port Orford, and also just talk about marine science. We also do educational programs and lots of family-friendly events. We're doing a beach cleanup as well this coming Sunday, if anyone's interested. We try and keep everything, yeah, family-friendly. We've done lots of events for kids. We also created some, a children's story recently, which we're bringing into Port Orford schools, to talk about the animals that you can find out at the Marine Reserve. And we also have lots of citizen science opportunities. Here you can see, or I guess, in the picture, you can see my friend Maddie. She's taking a picture of a tide pool. Every summer, we do something called a BioBlitz, which is an attempt to take a snapshot of biodiversity in an area. So you're trying to basically find as many species as you can, and through an app called iNaturalist, this is connected to scientists who can then have a better understanding of not only the biodiversity of the area, but also the health of the species, because they can tell from the pictures, you know, if the starfish are looking healthier, et cetera, if we're seeing more sun stars, which is an important one right now. And then the science at the Reserve is obviously crucial to having the Reserve. We have to study it, and we have to know what's going on out there. So some of the big things going on out there are the ecological monitoring programs. We recently had some OSU scientists out. They were tracking fish movements during the cascadia, the blasting of the Cascadia Subduction Zones, because they wanted to see how crab and groundfish would react to those seismic blasts. So we're still waiting to hear what their research concluded. We also, with ODFW, do human dimensions research within the community. And we have, as mentioned, a big Oregon State University connection. So they, you know, they bring scientists in all summer long, but also all year long. So they do PISCO, which is the group of scientists that actually first discovered the sea star wasting issue and brought it to attention across the West Coast. So we're involved with that, and we have volunteer opportunities through that. Scientists also work on fish recruitment, acoustic telemetry, which is how we monitor the movement of fish at the Marine Reserve to see if they're staying around. Do they move around? What are those fish doing? We also monitor ocean acidification, and we have the OSU Field Station, which is an educational place where students can come and learn about the ocean. We also have an intern every summer who comes and joins us, which is lovely. All right, next slide, looking forward. So we asked the question of what is the future of marine stewardship in Oregon? With an ever-changing climate, it's more important than ever to understand marine ecosystems, and we also want to do our part to like translate the scientists that is hap, or the science that is happening at the Marine Reserve to our communities, so that people see the utility of having this area protected. Yeah. Our goal is to inspire the next generation of ocean stewards as well, hence the educational programming, community outreach, and just being kind of an open door to talk about the science and inspire people to get involved. And we have lots of opportunities to get involved. As mentioned, we do the BioBlitz every summer. It's a super fun opportunity to go tide pooling for science. We also have something called a Junket Tour, which we created during the pandemic. It's an audio tour that leads from the Port Orford Visitor Center down to the fishing dock, and it's narrated by local experts within our community, including fishermen, fish processors, recreational users, and tribal members. We also do coastal bird monitoring, youth outreach in our libraries and schools, and interpretation. So if anyone wants to volunteer, reach out. You can subscribe to our newsletter at the link provided, and we also have social media. And that is my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you guys have them.
Okay. So I don't have any questions, but we find it goes really quick if I just go through the list. Council Bradley?
No questions this evening.
Council Pogon?
I don't have any questions.
Council Skinner?
Ms. Janney, I actually did have a question for you. I actually teach up in Port Orford as well, and I was wondering about how you're reaching out here to the city of Gold Beach. Have you guys been talking with the city of Vannen too? Have you been reaching down, up and down the coast?
Yeah, that's definitely our goal. We have, I mean, we have yet to kind of reach out and expand, but that's definitely part of the reason that we're kind of trying to be more visible, yeah, up and down the coast. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Council McGilvery?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Council Madison?
I have none, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Tara, for bringing it forward. We really appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you guys so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
If you need an introduction to Mayor Mary in Vannen, let me know.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. Thank you, okay. Next up on the agenda is citizen comments. Does anybody have a comment? Put something in the chat, say yes, and I will recognize you. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 212208, possible local option levy for the fire equipment. I'm guessing this is going to be a meeting discussion?
Yes.
Where do we want to start?
Okay, so let me just like give a little background for, I mean, it's in the packet, but let me just give you a little background. So since, I went in the other room and changed my glasses. Okay, so since 1989, we've had a series of serial levies for fire capital equipment. So the property taxes that we pay in the city, those fund public safety, which includes the fire department and law enforcement. But to buy large capital equipment, like the fire trucks, we don't have enough money to do that. So years ago, they decided the best way to do that was through a series of levies. So typically, what they did until, I want to say 20, whatever the one was before 2013, it used to be $40,000 a year, and then it went up to $60,000 a year. And basically, that's just an assessment, and I put some of the math in there about what that means, and I took on page 33 of the packet, that's the tax rate, the 3-1, that's the taxing district for within the city limits at Gold Beach. And so like if a typical citizen looks at their tax bill, they're going to see all of those things on there. And so the city GB local option currently for this tax year, according to the assessor's office, is basically about 21 cents per thousand of assessed value is what it takes to get to that 60,000. So this year, this assessment that just went out in November was the last year of the seven-year levy that was approved in 2015. So in order to meet filing deadlines, to be on the different election calendars, there are certain times that we have to meet. And so in order to be, and this is a council decision, I'm just, I'm throwing this out there to you. This is you guys to decide if you want to do this. We have to approve a resolution calling for an election, and then there are certain things, as the election officer, I have to do paperwork with the county clerk in order to make that happen. But in order to do that, we have to approve something tonight, because by the time the next meeting comes around, the filing deadline for the primary election will be over. And Madam Mayor knows a whole lot more about politics than I do, but typically levies do better in the primary than in the general election, because usually there's a lot more stuff in the general election in November. So for our purposes, for the levy over the years, up until 2013, they were always slimmed down. It was just a given. And then in 2013, it didn't pass. It was like, what? So that was kind of a shock. So we had to do a little more outreach for the following, and it actually failed again the next year, but only by less than, I think it was like 32 votes, something like that. But the, kind of the weirdness of it is that staff, and that includes the fire department, the fire volunteers, the fire chief, me, we can talk about it until it becomes a measure. So once the county clerk's office assigns it a measure number, then we are prohibited by state law to discuss it any longer. But the elected officials, you don't have the same prohibition that government employees have. And so that's where we can provide you with all the information, but it's really the elected officials that have to get the information out there. Now, we can put, and we did the last time, we can put something in the water bills before it becomes a measure, but once it becomes a measure, we can't, because again, we're in the front office, we can't appear to be in favor of or against the measure that's on the ballot. And there, it's not like a huge major deal, but there have been people in the past that have gotten in trouble, government employees, for appearing to be either in support of or against a particular measure. So we have to be kind of careful there. But for the last election, Council Campbell and Council McVeigh, they really got out there, and, you know, they would talk to Rotary and talk to the Chamber, because it was kind of still going then, the senior center. So it's just, I think a lot of times people, they see our equipment and they go, oh, yeah, we're doing great things. Well, it's like, okay, we're doing great things because of the citizens. It's not that the city has some secret pot of money that we fund the fire department and our equipment with. Now, I will say that, and I included in the council packet that report that Chief Krieger had put together, which is really valuable. And Council Bradley had said last year that we should shorten that to put it into the water bills. And we had started on that, and I need to ask in the front office where we're at on that, because we did actually, we're going to make it like a tri-fold kind of thing. And the last time I remember talking about it is in November, so I need to talk to Kim and see if we actually did do that, but even if we had, we can send it out again. But that's just good information to get out to the citizens about, okay, this is the equipment that's available. And then these packets are left online too, so people can go look at it. But Chief Krieger does an excellent job of explaining what our department needs, how we can meet those needs, what's the best way, and, yeah. So anyway, so for the election, you guys, as the governing body, have to decide, do we want to go forward with putting it before the voters? And if the answer is no, then we don't need to talk about it anymore. But if the answer is yes, then we do need to pass the resolution tonight calling for the election. And then that sets into motion the other things.
Thank you. I'm ready to make a motion.
Oh. Council Madison?
I make the motion that the council adopt Resolution R. 2122-08, a resolution of the city of Gold Beach, Oregon, to submit to the voters of the city a measure concerning a seven-year capital projects local option tax for fire capital equipment and to call an election.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, let's check for discussion. I'll start with Council Bradley.
I know long-term, I'd like to see if there's a way we can fund them that isn't through property tax, but I know that we don't really have time to explore that, so I mean, my vote is going to be a nay.
Okay. Council Pogon?
I would, is there a way we can get those, if they haven't been made, you have the tri-fold type things, the brochure things, can we have those made where the councilors can actually hand those out, go door-to-door type thing?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, that's a great idea.
Thank you. Council Skinner? I just go in order, voting order, in case you're wondering. Council McGilvery?
I am in agreement with Council Bradley. I think we're going to have to get a lot of money versus out of property taxes, but I think we need to start exploring ways to draw revenue without increasing property taxes at the very end. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. Council Madison, any comments, discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First is, the materials and information provided in the packet regarding the topic, are we as councilors free to use that information in kind of marketing this option?
Absolutely.
Right, and then the other question I had is, what is the deadline for the motion or for the item to be filed versus cycles that we have available to put that on the water bill? Like how many rotations of that water bill do we have to take the United Joe before that is no longer an option?
Probably next month, because I think once I do the part by the end of the month, the filing deadline for me to do my stuff with the clerk's office, I want to say is February 25th. And then, I don't know, I can't remember, because it comes up every seven years, so I don't remember. But I think it takes the clerk's office a little while to assign the number, or maybe it's closer to the election before they assign the number. So I want to say that we have like, like four to eight weeks. And that's that, just that staff can't do that. So if we want to get it out in the water bills, and just, Council Madison, I'm going to segue real quickly over to what Council McGilvery said about the additional property tax. What the cell was, and this is for all of you, what the cell has always been in the past is that this isn't going to increase anyone's property taxes. This is, we've had these levies since 1989, it's just renewing the levy. And so that's the reminder to try to tell people is we're not, the tax that you're paying currently, you've been paying for the fire equipment levy. We used to call it the fire truck levy, but we buy things other than trucks with it, so we call it fire equipment levy. That has been on city taxpayers' bills since 1989, so it's not an increase. So that's something that, when you're talking to people, you want to tell them that, that it's not an increase. But as far as like getting out material for you guys, I can start putting stuff together now so that once the deadline cuts off for where staff can help you, we'll have all that stuff for you then. And then you guys can go out and, you know, beat the doors or do whatever it is that you want to do.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Administrator Fritz. So, okay, so we have like at least one uti- So, okay, so we have at least one utility bill. We will be able to use that for it, right?
Correct, yep.
And you've put together like the highlights and the details to kind of flesh out. I mean, there's so much good information. I don't think we'll have a problem blending up, but if there was a takeaway we could use, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, we just, I want to say, and I'll have to look back in, because I keep all this stuff from the prior elections. I want to say that we had already put together like, you know, a two-minute elevator speech for Councilors Campbell and McVeigh before, just so that, you know, when you're put on the spot, you've got it already and you can answer those questions. And then it's, and it is handy that Chief Krieger, you know, he's a business owner. So obviously, you know, people when, not necessarily talking to him, but when they go into the businesses, that's something that, you know, the topic's already being discussed. So that's another good thing.
So it's, and last question, I apologize. So what we were putting into motion with the fuel packs conversation, I know over the past couple of years, Chief Krieger has shared some really great video with me and just from my day job stuff. And so I'm wondering if like, would it be okay if we like put a video, a little promo video, like can we kind of do that? Because when they put a face to something like this, it really does pull people in, folks, right things.
That is an I don't know, and I will ask the attorney that tomorrow. Because I know that in the past, the previous chief hadn't been really, he didn't really want to be the face of anything. But Chief Krieger is, when you talk fire, he's all excited about that. So I don't think he would have a problem putting together an elevator speech. So I will ask the attorney that, like what's the fine line on like doing a video? And then maybe we could put something on Mr. King's website too, you know, an informational thing about the levy.
Yeah, that would be great. We've had a record number of calls to Chief King. You know, really just showcasing the, and it not being an additional tax, but you know, a continuum is, I think, awesome.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Madison. Those are really good questions, and I'll talk to the attorney about it.
May I get Councilor Skinner?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
City administrator, correct?
That's right.
I was looking at the number, so the levy that just expired was a $60 million levy passed the last one, not the 2013 Fire Stat. But now in 2022, it's still just $60,000, the number's saying the same?
Yeah, and I looked at the math because previously we had said that it would be approximately 27 cents per thousand. But I think the reason why the cost is coming down is that there's been additions to the tax base. And the levy is always a set amount. So if there's more people within the tax base, that actually reduces the amount that each property owner has to pay because they only levy $60,000. So that is.
Did it estimate any need for an increase in that amount for the fire department?
Well, based, and I just took this off of what Chief Krieger's report was. And he was saying the next piece of equipment that they think that they need to acquire is in the range of, it looked like it was between like 225,000 and 400. So if we have a seven-year levy of $60,000, that's 420,000. So that's where I took that from. I took it directly out of what he was saying, what he estimated things would be. So I think so.
Thank you.
But also, right now, and Chief White and I were talking about that the other day too, is just the cost of things is just insane right now. So we probably wouldn't be able to buy a truck for that today. But hopefully, in a couple of years' time, by the time that we've started to collect some of the money, the weirdness in, actually Superintendent Newdahl and I were talking about this too, like we needed to buy a public works vehicle right now. It just would be stupid and insane, crazy price-wise. So hopefully, by the time we're ready to buy this next piece of equipment that the chief says we need, the price of things will have come down some. But right now, it's like a year out, like to even order it. So thankfully, we don't need it right now, but.
So when talking about the levy, it is really focused on that piece of equipment missing from the fleet or there?
That's, the way that he had written the report, it was like, okay, this is what we have. This is where I think we need to be. We've acquired this piece, we've acquired this piece. This piece over here is now what we need to be focusing on. And I, and just off the top of my head, I want to say it's a Type 6, but it's in there. But I want to say that's the next one that he says that we need. And he's really focused on, like in the past, we've always bought engines. And he was the first chief that really came in and said, okay, we have this really expensive equipment to respond to things that we only have about 5% of the time. The things that we actually respond to all the time, like motor vehicle accidents, beach fires, wildfires, we, you can't use the truck like you see, you know, kids playing with fire engines. That doesn't work for that kind of work. And so he was really the first chief that said, we don't really have the kind of equipment we need for this type of stuff that we do. And so that was kind of like a big departure from how we've done things in the past. And it made complete sense.
Well, that makes, I was going to say that's a great conversation point in having a conversation about the levy, the way you just said it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I will just put in my two cents that yes, it is a Type 6. That's the next major purchase. But there'll be other equipment that'll make up the rest of that $600,000.
Just in conversations, I know he's in need of, going to be in need of safety. I know in conversations we've had, he's going to be needing safety equipment because they have, like certain equipment can only last 10 years. Even if it's been in a bag for nine, once it gets that 10-year expiry.
Yeah, about the time that we get done paying off the SCBA loan that's reserved, we're going to have to buy that all over again. Because that's one of those things that I believe is only good for 10 years. And it's good, I mean, safety stuff, it's important.
And our call volume has dropped dramatically increased. They need to, when they go up to a call, they need the equipment. They need to do the right job. And a Type 6 is more of the kind that's designed for wildfire, beach fires, those kinds of fires that are pretty frequent in our area. And I think one of our smartest purchases was the water tender because a lot of the places we help don't have water. And for those of you who don't know, Gold Beach Water and Fire contracts with the city provide the service, and they also give us money as part of the contract to help pay for equipment. So it's a pretty good deal for both sides. We're not duplicating services. We join together, and a lot of our volunteers come from their district. So it works out pretty good.
Yeah, Assistant Chief Adams?
In the district, yeah.
Yeah.
So it works out really good. So I'm in favor, of course, also. And we do have a motion, a second on the floor. And so I think we're ready to vote, so I will call the question. And I will start with Councilor Bradley.
Aye.
Councilor Begone?
Aye.
Councilor Skinner?
Aye.
Councilor McGilvery?
Aye.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero.
Okay, thank you so much. And I will talk to the attorney about the elevator speech and collateral, and I will get that to you guys as soon as possible.
Okay. All right. Next up is monthly housing strategies implementation update. That's a lot of orders.
And Madam Mayor, may I ask you to update on this one? Because I think you've been talking to Matt more than I have.
So just to kind of get everybody back up to speed, there was a report done a couple of years ago, almost three years now. And from that report, we got a grant from the LCD to implement a good portion of it. And that's going to be called the Housing Action Plan Act. And so the plan is, Angel Planning Group is going to help us draft, create, and go through the process. I call it the heavy lifting. They're going to do the heavy lifting on it so that our staff isn't bogged down with all of that. However, our staff does have to work on it. And then we'll start having joint council and planning commission meetings. It does two things. One, we get to do it together, and we don't ever get to spend any time together. The meetings will also be more efficient because staff only has to attend one meeting, and the public only has to attend one meeting for each section to give input. Because these are zoning changes, planning changes, which do require public input, which of course, we want public input. So that's kind of how it goes. It's a little confusing. I keep trying to remember what we're doing and how we're doing it, and I keep forgetting. So if you feel confused, it's okay. We have experts that are going to guide us through. My question for the council is, do you want to try to fit this in, these special meetings, into our regular council meeting? Or do we want to have a special meeting set aside? Probably the four of them, I think?
Yes, and just as a quick reminder, when we did the housing study itself a couple of years back, it went fairly expeditiously. So it wasn't like we needed extra time for an extra meeting. And you can always, if it looks like it's going to go long, we can always do that. But, you know, just for the sake of, because I think we all like have death by meeting, all of us, you know, in our day lives, that I think, we'll start the first meeting, and if it looks like things are going to go sideways and we need more time. But I think that we probably can, just based on the work that was done previously. I don't think that we're going to need a whole lot of extra time, and I don't want to make you guys have another extra meeting for something that maybe we don't need to have an extra meeting. So I think we should start meeting number one and see how it goes. And then if it looks like, okay, yeah, this is way too much of a regular meeting, then the next time, we can schedule an extra one. If that sounds okay.
Counsel, okay with that?
No, I think that's a great idea.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we will plan on the first one being March 7th, at least, which is our regular council meeting. Do we want to try to have those in person or have them most everybody? Or we'd have to do a circle run or a meeting together?
Can I say I don't know right now?
Okay.
Last month was the worst month of the pandemic so far, so my vote is no right now, but.
If in the next two weeks, you have an opinion whether or not you want it in person or remote, feel free to email the administrator your opinion. We're good at both, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can make it work, but yeah.
I think we're probably the most efficient group on remote meetings. Does anybody have any questions on this particular topic? Comments? Okay. All right, the next one is a notification of a potential dangerous building. And this is the Creek County Porter Building, also known as the Campbell Building, also known as the Little Bank Building. I took some pictures of it. I believe those were put in the packet. When I was walking by, I noticed that another window was out. And I will let you know that one of the fun things about being the mayor is I don't have any skin in the game. And as any of you might remember from me being on the council, I don't like dangerous building designations. So I have reached out to the fellow that has the mortgage on the property. And I'm hoping that we can get some movement to try to solve the problem without having to do a dangerous building designation. But that shouldn't stop you from doing what you need to do and your job. But just know I'm trying to solve the problem without having to go through an official process. And the issue with the building is it has a clouded title. The company that owns it is no longer in existence, but we do have contact with one of the partners. And there's a pretty significant mortgage on it that hasn't been foreclosed on. So that's why there's a cloud. And Administrator, please take it away.
Well, as the mayor said, this is something that for, I think, a couple of you councilors have been around long enough that this topic has come up before. We actually have had a couple of executive sessions about some of the issues around the property. We had actually talked a couple of years ago that we hoped that it wouldn't get here, but here we are because the gentleman that has the mortgage that doesn't want to foreclose, he also doesn't want to take care of the property. And so now it's really just gotten to the point where now we do need to do something. I believe the mayor does have a line on possibly helping solve the clouded title issue, but that's something that she's doing just like on a political level. It's just not necessarily a city thing, but just trying to help facilitate. For those of you that don't know, her property management company is Cooperative Management Solutions because Tammy likes to be, do things collaboratively. So she is working to try to help resolve that situation, not so much as a city thing, but just trying to help solve problems for people that ultimately will solve a problem for the city. But in the meantime, we have gotten to the point where, okay, we now are where it is officially a dangerous building, in my opinion. And that's part of what the code says. If staff goes out, takes a look at it, if we think that it meets the definition of what a dangerous building is by our code, then I am to notify the city council, so that's what I'm doing now. And then the next step, once I notify you, is that it's up to you guys to set a date and time for the dangerous building hearing. Now, the mayor can continue with the collaborative approach that she has. And if we get to the date of the meeting and we have a resolution, it's sort of like going to court. You go there, it's like we've got a solution, it's all good. We don't necessarily have to have the hearing, but we do need to set the date and time. Typically, what we've done in the past is, once I notify you, we just put it on the agenda for the following meeting because there are certain notice requirements that I have to do to the property owners. So that's what I need from you tonight is, is it okay to put this as an agenda item next month as a dangerous building hearing?
All right, counsel.
I say absolutely. Good luck with trying to move forward on stuff, Ms. Mayor. I think that if we don't do something about it now, it's just going to sit there and rot even worse, and nobody's going to take, nobody's going to take care of it. So I say we move forward on it and do whatever we have to at this point to get it cleaned up.
Do you need a motion?
I don't think so. Well, actually, we were supposed to set a date, time, a date and time certain. So yeah, so I guess a motion that we'll have a dangerous building hearing at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Would you like to make that motion, sir?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we have a dangerous building, say it again, dangerous building.
Hearing?
Hearing at our next city council meeting on March 7th.
I'll second.
Second, we can order Madison and leave. She led up first. I'll do a quick round of discussion. Counselor Red?
Pictures speak for themselves.
Counselor Begone?
Yeah, I just think, I think we need to move forward on it. It's not, it's an ice war. It's something that hasn't been taken care of. They know it hasn't been taken care of. The lien holder, the owners, I mean, everybody, nobody's done anything with it, so.
Counselor Skinner?
Aye. What's Begone with my question? So the owner hasn't cooperated with the city in the past while moving forward, but they're cooperating independently, looking at possible solutions with you outside of your role?
So the current owner just wants to give it back to the mortgage holder, but the mortgage holder would have to do a foreclosure process.
Which he's not going to do. And the current owner and the mortgage person have not been cooperating with the city?
Well, the LLC that was dissolved, technically, they are still the owner because the gentleman that the mayor has been talking to, the lien holder, has not foreclosed. They actually wouldn't mind just turning it back, but the gentleman that has the lien has not wanted to foreclose. He wants his money. And it's like, okay, but it's kind of, if they're not going to pay you, you're not going to get your money.
And the timeline on the.
Oh gosh, this has been going on for years. I mean, it just, it started.
2010, the town partners won.
Yeah, that was the number I was looking for?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a really long time. But the, one of the partners, the other person, we weren't able to locate them. But they're, they would be happy to work with the city to try to resolve something. But it's, anyway, so the mayor's working with the lien holder. I think she's made a good first stab at it, and hopefully. We would prefer to not, whenever the city has to get involved in dangerous buildings, that means we end up having to spend money and lien the property, and then we don't get it into the property itself. And in a situation like this where it's, we might not get the money back. So we try to find other ways to get it resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGilvery?
I would have to agree with Councilman Begone. I think it's an ice war, and it means something has to happen. And hopefully, we can get some agreement from the owner of the property to make a move or go ahead and go with the lien.
Counselor Madison? Counselor Hudson?
Oh, mayor, the sentiments of my fellow councilors, you know, that, that building that's not the first stoplight that to, from the north, you know, in town, but it sits right in the hub of what I would consider the historic district of our city. And there's just so much sentiment and adoration for that building and so much potential. And I, I just certainly hope that there is some resolve in, in, you know, moving forward and hoping the best for the, the property owners and however that works out. Mayor, just want to thank you for going out of your way to help mitigate that. I'm, I'm certain that's going to help the process, however it ends up.
Thank you. Administrator always said the mayor's like the queen of England, no power but lots of fluff. And so I'm trying my fluff.
You have influence.
I don't think that's exactly how you word it, but anyway. And I am hopeful because the market is up, there are interested buyers. So it might be resolved before you have to do what you have to do. With that, it will call a question. Counselor Bradley?
Aye.
Counselor Verdon?
Aye.
Counselor Skinner?
Aye.
Counselor McGilroy?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Thank you. My only request, administrator, is could you please also include the lien holder on the notice?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, because, yes, absolutely.
And I have the address if you need it, but I think you have it.
If it's the same person, right?
It's the same city, right?
Yeah.
Cool, thank you. You guys are really good at chewing through tough topics relatively quickly. Okay, department update. Chief White, welcome.
Mayor Kaufman and councilors, it's a privilege to give you a few months' update. It feels like it's been a lot longer than that, but we've been busy. Before I get started, Counselor Skinner, welcome and thank you for joining us in service. This will be my first opportunity to really update you guys. And many of you don't know much about me. But one of the things that, that I would like to share is my focus as we go through any questions or future planning is my priority in the legitimacy of the Gold Beach Police Department. And when I say legitimacy of the Gold Beach Police Department, that means a cooperative relationship with the community and with the other partners in public safety and the city to ensure that people are cooperating with us because they want to, not because they have to. And there's, there's a lot of ways to get this done. But in this small community, I've only been more reassured since assuming this position that we have an amazing community of support. And we have a lot of opportunities to make a difference. We've, we've got a lot of things going well for us and a lot of work still to do to keep that momentum. One of the priorities that I've had and will continue to pursue is the training and retention of compassionate qualified professionals within the department. There's a number of ways to do that. First, we pick the best people we can, but then life happens. And being readily aware of everything going on around us in the last couple of years, we can all agree, have been a challenge, especially for those of us that work in the field of law enforcement. Even though we generally have an extremely supportive community, we have a lot of folks that still come through our community that may not share the same values and appreciation that the majority that we don't ever deal with have for us. That being said, we still receive so many people stopping by the PD just to say thank you, stopping us on the street to say thank you. That really helps, including the support of the council, city administrator, all the staff in our department, making sure that our people do feel appreciated and they know that their work is valuable and important. It does help immensely when we do deal with the few folks out there who would like to throw things at us, threaten us, and make our jobs pretty scary. But we also know that we, we stand in that gap with training and experience that the rest of the public doesn't have and doesn't want to have to ensure that we keep our streets safe, we keep the folks that might be camped out in one area, moving, moving along is without, without bullying them or pressuring them, helping them feel welcome, helping support their lives, but also ensuring that everyone else can continue about their life as well. So those are some of the challenges. One of the ways that besides just working with communicating and appreciating the staff we do have is continuing to feed them with, with training and helping them mature in their careers. And one of the things that was initiated before I came in, Sergeant Teeter preceded me by a couple of months. He had, began to set up training. One of the things Gold Beach hasn't done in a long time, if ever, is be a network of facilitating hosting training sessions. So that's not only getting instructors in-house in some of the more critical components of use of force, TASER, firearms, weaponless defensive tactics, but it's also building a relationship with our fellow agencies and the state, which, which he started and we've continued to do. And just in the last few months, we've, Sergeant Teeter co-hosted a resiliency training that was partnered with Brookings Police Department, the sheriff's office, and Gold Beach PD, was hosted in Brookings. And almost all of our officers had a chance to go free of charge thanks to his work in order to make sure that their paths forward were set in a positive direction and they had the tools to take care of their families through that resilience. Second, the not so fun part, but what gets us in trouble and had new lost past regarding changes in the TASER requirements. We have, he's also a TASER instructor and use of force instructor. So we completed a new tracer, TASER update training. We've had firearms training since in the last few months. Hosted a field sobriety refresher class with DPSST that the instructor said brought the most number of students that he's had in a class since COVID started. We draw, we drew in OSP troopers all the way from the I-5 corridor and officers from clear north of Coos Bay and all the way to Brookings. So that, those trainings build community and it feels, is an opportunity to build support amongst our, our members and to share what's working and what isn't working. And that's one of the focuses of bringing that training into Gold Beach is to help people see that we are invested. We're not just putting our people out to maintain the requirements. We actually want to help the community of law enforcement up and down the coast have more tools. This weekend, we, and that occurred at the library, building relationships. And we, we have great facilities to do this type of training. And that was where we did that. And then this weekend, we're working at the high school to do a weaponless defensive tactics refresher course, which helps us try to not injure people. That's why, and not be injured ourselves in the event that we do have to, to go hands-on with an individual. So I'm excited for that and really appreciative of his vision to invest in our officers. One of the other things that we did and I'm extremely proud of because part of my past career was as a deputy coroner. Gold Beach is the only agency in Perry County that has a deputy medical examiner on staff. And right now, that's our, our administrative assistant, Gail Whitmore. And she, we know that it takes time to get up to speed and she's, she's given us that. I'm thinking about five years or around that time, I'm going to retire. So we, this, this last few months, we were able to get Officer Sarah Anford, who's got a keen interest in these detailed investigations, especially death investigation, trained and certified as a deputy medical examiner. And that requires cooperation with the state medical examiner's office. She went to Medford, got to participate in autopsies. But it's, it's simple to think that a death investigation is just an investigation. It does require similar skills, but the way that you conduct the investigation, especially the way you integrate with the surviving family and loved ones and friends of an individual, changes the outcome of the entire experience. And that's one aspect that is a very critical component of anyone that works in that capacity. But the, the things to look for and the red flags to, when to ask for help are also very unique. So that training is specialized, it's important. And it allows us, especially with Curry General Hospital in our, in our jurisdiction, for us to have really open, honest, collaborative conversations with medical professionals using their language. They appreciate that. I know that makes us do our job better and it helps us catch those things that could easily fall through the cracks. So I can assure the citizens of Gold Beach that we've, we've definitely gone above and beyond what's required as an agency to provide that level of service. And both Gail and Sarah are incredibly kind and compassionate people. And at the same time, Sarah took that on as well as being, you know, our goal is for everyone to focus on a priority. She also is a forensic investigator for child forensic interviewing. And also took on a, in the last four months, the task of recreating our evidence locker with shelves and organization and an audit to make sure that we're compliant and I've just been on that. So we have a balance of, of like, I'd like to say, young officers that have been on for that three to five years. It's a real critical time, there's a lot of enthusiasm. But we've been blessed to have a balance of half of our agencies also been in law enforcement closer to that, 10, 10 years up to 20, just 26 years with me in, in public safety. So we're a very balanced organization and it's working extremely well. Equipment, we mentioned it earlier with the, the challenges. And we did bring in a new car that was ordered last summer. It was expected to arrive in six weeks. Six months later, and a lot of phone calls, we did receive that vehicle. It went all over the country before it got to us, but we really needed it. It replaced a 2004 Ford Expedition that just sold by sealed bid. Last week, it served us well, but it was worn out, really, really worn out. And with the goal to try to have about a 10-year cycle in our cars in this small town, where's a car at? And we have, we have good, safe equipment and a, and a confident working relationship. I'm glad to have the team that we have. And I know that, I've never worked in an agency that I've had, had more support and knowledge and experience available to tackle almost any problem that would come up. Mainly, I know that city administrator Fritz does her job night and day and I appreciate her experience in helping make sure that I, I, she tells me what I need to know before I need to know it. So, so thank you. And, and everybody in Public Works and the Fire Department, it's, it really is exciting to come to work here and be part of this team. Any questions?
Yeah, Chief White is, no. I mean, he tells me all these things, it's like, whoa, I didn't know that. No, he, no, it's the other way around. He tells me exciting things every day.
Just a gentle reminder that we, we use official titles in our council meetings from our council rooms.
I would like to share with the councilors, if you don't have any questions tonight, I'll give out my cards, they're, they're up front, they're anywhere. I am, whether it's a business owner, somebody that just wants to talk to me, anything else, but especially for you guys, if you want to take a drive through the city and point out things that you see that you have questions about or you want to sit in the office and just share concerns that you hear or want answers to and what, know what we're doing about it, please just let me know. And we will make that a priority. It's a surprise for a lot of folks when they realize that I'll just tell you to get a group of your friends together, whether you're in a house or a business, and I'll come and answer any questions you have. I'm pretty shameless and I don't even need warning in advance. So it's been exciting for, to go into businesses and they do, when they figure out that's real, they do bring in more and more people that don't even have anything to do with them, but they had a question, so they invited along.
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
I will say that Chief White will also talk to teenagers in groups if you just bring them into his office.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cool.
Citizens of all ages.
Yeah.
Have you been doing things with that, well, you haven't been here during normal times. So assuming normal times for you here, you'll be doing things at the elementary, at the K-8 school as well?
Yeah, and I have had, we've had more challenges and opportunities to be involved at the high school since I started. And I know that Sergeant Teeter has had a very active engagement at the elementary school. And I'm, I'm excited to, to join in that and be more involved. One of my early things that I did was start a school resource officer program and am a school, certified school resource officer. So I do love to work in the schools and is making sure that I keep those priorities in focus.
And just Counselor Bradley, when he came on, you know, because COVID, normally, we would have a tour with the different departments. And now that Counselor Skinner, you're on board. So we will get you in touch with, we're going to hear from, from Superintendent Newdollar just a sec here, but in normal times, we would give you a tour. You know, you'd go see the wastewater plant and all that, it gets up. So at some point, hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, we'll be able to get you to see all the different parts of the, the city.
Any other councilor have any questions for the chief?
I just have a comment, mayor.
Sure.
Chief White, I just wanted you to know, I really appreciate your leadership, your professionalism and the collaborative approach. The emphasis of training and decorum invested in your department really has the potential to build a dynamic law enforcement team. And your enthusiasm and your knowledge are a welcome breath of fresh air. And I just really appreciate you for taking the job.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued support.
Anybody else?
I want to just echo what Counselor Madison had to say, but also, any of the trainings that you guys do, obviously not like firearm training and stuff, but the how to protect yourself type things, do you, are those, were you opened up, um, up to the public and stuff or no? Well, obviously not right now with COVID, but.
Yeah, COVID has been a challenge. Before COVID, I actually, when I was still working at the sheriff's office, I did group trainings with the school, with girls from the basketball team. I had, I did numerous things that were community-related. I would love to get back at that because it's invaluable, especially with the teenagers. It broke down barriers and opened up communication to this day with those young people that I wouldn't have had otherwise. So I do hope that that's something in the future. I will expect that as we take on more community challenges, we will bring people together in a community forum to, to get some input in that. Luckily, we're just not at a place right now where that's, that's essential. But it's something that I welcome and value for sure. Awesome.
Anybody else?
I, I have one more quick question.
Sure.
Chief, Chief White, do you have any feedback or experience in a neighborhood watch or a next door type program? And is that something that you could see being implemented here in the future in Gold Beach?
Yeah, that's actually, that was actually something I was just thinking about when I made the last comment. One of my jobs before I became an administrator was at Community Resources Deputy. And I, I managed a program instead of calling it Neighborhood Watch because it required a lot of collaboration to really make that program work and it would burn people out. But really to put together a neighborhood safety program that allowed every level of involvement in a community. So some folks really took it seriously and some folks just wanted their number available in case, in case they were out of town and someone wanted to get ahold of them because their water, water was running out of their, their windows, you know? But yes, there is, there's been a lot of that in my past. And it's something that I think Gold Beach really needs to focus on in the, the coming years. So I expect there to be more challenges. Everyone may not know, I know, I've spoken on several different levels, but very early in my beginning career, back in 1999, I went to counterterrorism school and continued in counterterrorism and domestic terrorism throughout my career. And it was a great opportunity to learn things I wouldn't have known. But at the beginning of my career, so 20 to 30 years ago, if you wanted to keep bad things happening in your neighborhood, you put up motion lights on your house and it drove criminal behavior to the houses that didn't have motion lights. Well, now everyone's got street lights up and motion lights on their homes. So the next level today is camera system. So if you have cameras on your house, they don't want to get recorded. So they'll go to a neighborhood where there aren't cameras. And one of the ways that we can, can easily control some of that in the community is through a strategic camera program. Not that it's being shared publicly, but it's people that do have that safety emphasis who want to take responsibility for their little, their corner or their street. And they have that available and they manage that for us. And it's a resource that we can reach out to them. And it's already being utilized in, in many businesses around town that we know where to go and who to talk to to get video evidence. But that's. But that's something that we could easily utilize more, and with the technology costs coming down as much as they have, it's something that I'd like to offer more information to people. And I know we have community members that are very knowledgeable and have facilitated that program long before I arrived, so I'd like to continue that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions for Chief White? Comments? Okay, hearing none, I just want to remind councilors, if you haven't been to the training, if you do want to speak to staff, you do have to let the administrator know and technically get her permission. So even though Chief White has opened it up, you got to follow protocol, a little bit like the military. She's never, to my knowledge, ever restricted anybody from doing that. But I've also found, even when I was a counselor, sometimes if I talked to staff, even as a business owner, I would freak them out. So it was always better to let her know and then have her say, please talk to this person. So.
And I would just say, and, and I appreciate that the mayor has always been very hypersensitive of, of the training command. But the, the, some of the background on that was that in the past, councilors would contact police officers directly and not go through the chief, not go through, and so then there was kind of this very fine line prior to me that was, that was drawn, where it's like, okay, from now, but I will say, because we have a different kind of relationship with Chief White, he is, you know, I feel sorry for, for Will, he's gonna, you know, you're a tough act to follow. Or we'll go first next time, because it's like, yeah, what are you gonna say, Will? But if the council members want to talk to Chief White, I don't have a problem with you contacting him directly. I do have a problem with contacting police officers directly because if you, if you have an issue or, or a citizen brings you an issue about a particular police officer, whether that's an interaction with a traffic stopper or whatever, please come to me first, then I'll talk to Chief White. But please, that's where the fine line is, is like not contacting staff members directly. Because it does, like, like the mayor said, as a business owner, they, some of the people are like, okay, is the mayor talking to me, or is this Tammy Kaufman, the property owner, talking to me? And so, but because Chief White is so out there and loves to talk to people, you guys feel free to talk to him anytime, you don't have to, to, to talk to me about it first. But please don't talk to the staff unless you talk to the, the chief. Because that does, it does freak out the, the underlings. Because they, they, you know, it's like, they don't, it, it just freaks people out, so. And feel free to contact Chief White.
I, I believe that Superintendent Newdollar's predecessor was basically fed up with a council member that wouldn't ignore.
Right.
So we don't want that to happen again.
Right, but that, also, that, that, that superintendent was, was very, that I don't want people to contact me. You know, there's a way, there's, there's a thing that needs to go through, and you, you need to go through that channel, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jordan, you're a hard act to follow, so, you know, you guys feel free to call him anytime.
Anytime.
Okay. So with that, Counselor Newdollar, you would ask for some time? You have to unmute them.
I got it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to give you a brief update of our two projects that we have going for the water department. Currently, we have Morello Construction on site and constructing for the last three weeks. So far, they've installed 750 lineal feet of water main, and they've been slogging their way through Jerry's Flat moving southward on Highway 101. And they are able to achieve, when they get rolling, about 200 lineal feet a day currently coming down the highway. And so that's, that's really good when you're installing a main the size that we have contracted to replace. And so on our other project, which we have, which is replacing the water intake and rebuilding the water treatment plant, we had a meeting that was mandatory last week for pre-construction. And we had seven attendees, contractors who were interested in our project. And so we took them on a tour, and they were able to ask us questions about the project, anything under the sun. And they have another two weeks to put together a bid package and submit it to us on 2/22/22 at 2:00 P.M. And the way the cost for that project is anywhere from $2.3 to $3 million. And so hopefully, we're on the bottom end in, in a couple of weeks. But I'll know more at the next meeting, because by then, we'll probably be putting something in front of you for approval, as long as they doggone the eyes and cross all the t's. But are there any questions, for chance? If not, I will bid you adieu until next month.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will go to councilor comments, and we always get to start with Counselor Madison. Because that's who's listed first.
Thank you, Mayor. So first off, I just wanted to kind of recap all of it. The planning, training opportunities that were provided to us, and thank Administrator Fritz for making that happen so quick. And I think what was the most entertaining about that is that those of us that attended kind of clapped a little bit and talked about our takeaways and what we found interesting about that. So that was great, and yeah, the, the first one especially was just tremendous. In fact, we got to stay on for an extra hour in our little breakout session and just talk shop. And so that was great. I just wanted to say thank you, Administrator Fritz, for pulling that off. It was, it was awesome. Thanks.
Okay, I actually have to, that, you can thank Mayor Kaufman. She was the one, I actually knew nothing about it. She was the one that, that told me about it and said, hey, we need to send this out. So thanks to her. But I'm glad that you got something out of it. That's awesome.
Yeah, I think we all did, and thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Always looking out for us. I really do appreciate that.
Yeah, it was good training. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Bradley?
I did have a member of the, a board member of the fireworks fund reach out to me, kind of explained some of the ideas they have, and they wanted to approach the council, so I made sure that they had Administrator Fitz's email and instructed them what to do to talk to her if they want to get on the agenda, so hopefully you'll be hearing from them.
Okay. And if, and if anybody ever wants money for public stuff, our administrator's actually a tax administrator, so she makes those decisions.
If it's the promo money.
Yeah, for promo money. They are welcome to make presentations to get the word out here as well. We usually make time for people, but a lot of people don't realize she's the money person. So, okay, anything else, sir?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, Counselor Verona?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Counselor Skinner?
I am looking forward to working with you all and learning, there's so much to learn from all of you, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Counselor McGilbury?
Well, this last month, I did attend the Fair Board meeting.
Thank you.
To become that liaison, and it's been a very interesting process. They're, they're certainly going forward, you know, whole hog for the fair, so I think we've been really enjoying this fair this year. The, they're, they're struggling a bit with the friends of the fair, and, you know, the state of the kitchen, the table, the dishes, we, so we'll see how that pans out in time. But I do plan to continue to go with the Fair Board meetings, and we'll see if we keep you up to date.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you doing that. Okay, and I have a really long one, but I promised Administrator I would not read all of it, so I'm just going to read key points. I even made a little cheat sheet for myself. Of course, February is Black History Month, and racism is still with us, but it is up to us to prepare our children for what they may have to meet, and hopefully we shall overcome Rosa Parks. And one of the things that a lot of us don't realize is that Oregon has a pretty negative history with racial stuff. And in June 18 of 1844, our provisional government passed Oregon's first black exclusion law. It states that blacks who tried to settle in Oregon would be publicly whipped. Thirty-nine lashes repeated every six months until they left Oregon. On December 19th in 1844, the exclusion law was changed. Blacks who tried to settle in Oregon would not be whipped, instead they'd be forced to do public labor. Five years later, the Oregon Territorial Legislature enacted exclusion law that prohibits Negro, Mulatto, to enter, reside within the limits of its territory. However, Negroes and Mulattos and their children already living in the territory were not subject to this law. In September of 1851, Oregon's 1849 exclusion law is enforced against Jacob Vanderpool, the only instance of an African-American being expelled under one of Oregon's exclusion laws. In 1854, the legislature bars testimony of Negroes, Mulattos, Indians, and persons of half or more Indian blood in proceedings involving a white person. In 1857, Oregon voters approved the Oregon Constitution, which banned both slavery and new black residents in Oregon. It makes it illegal for blacks to own real estate, make contracts, vote, or use the legal system. I always found it interesting that Oregon was against slavery, but black people couldn't live here. In February of 1859, Oregon became the 33rd state, admitted as an anti-slavery state, and the only one admitted it with an exclusionary clause. In 1862, Oregon Legislature passes a law banning interracial marriage and institutes a $5 annual tax on blacks, Chinese, Hawaiians, and Mulattos. Those unable to pay had to perform word banquets. In 1900, Oregon voters rejected the proposal to repeal the exclusion law in the Constitution. In 1922, Beatrice Kennedy became the first African-American woman to graduate from Lewis and Clark Law School. I'd really like to meet that lady. She's not here anymore, but that must have touched some deaths. Didn't you read about Lewis and Clark?
Mayor, I was just making a note to ask my husband, who is an artist, this is such a question, it's like we're in at Lewis and Clark about Beatrice Kennedy. Thank you.
In 1926, exclusionary clauses, in 1926, exclusionary clause is removed from the Oregon Constitution. In 1951, the law repealed pro admitting interracial marriage. In 1957, Oregon's Fair Housing Act passes. We're moving along. In 1959, the Oregon Legislature, Legislature ratifies the 15th Amendment, 90 years efforts adopted in the United States. And then I wanted to mention William Rumway. He was, he lived to be about 89, 90 years old in the area. He was the, as far as I know, the only black colored, I don't know the right word, former slave that lived in our area and homesteaded.
There's things named after him. That, that was terribly interesting.
It was interesting, and I found some different articles, and, you know, they have different dates that he lived and different dates that he did, that he was around. There is a photo of him, which is amazing. And so I put some history in here, but he was a slave, and he escaped from California and came up here and found himself a, a nice history. He married an Indian woman, and they supposedly have a child, but I can't find anything on the child. So he ended his living mining and fishing, and from what the reports are, he was a very easy-to-get-along with guy, and everybody liked him. He's been buried in Oak Flat Cemetery. So that was really kind of a cool one to put together. Thank you for letting me talk. And with that, it is Administrator Heskey Canada.
I have one thing that I forgot to include in the packet, but I, I don't know if the owl can see it. See that? That's a, that's a check for $175,000. Will's, Will's shaking his head. Yay! The, the two projects at Riley Creek School were partially funded through grants from the Oregon Department of Transportation for what's called the SDA, the Small Cities Program. And due to COVID, things kept getting pushed back, and then we had a hard time getting a contractor, and then there were supply issues, and, uh, so this, this had started, gosh, I think in 2018, 2017, 2018. But the work that was done around the school, improving the sidewalks, the, the short sidewalk on Lea, the reason why it's shorts, because that's all we could afford to do, improved the roadway there by the school because it was breaking up pretty badly there. But anyway, we had two separate grants. One was for $100,000, the other one was for $75,000. So we just got that money a couple of weeks back from ODOT. Yay! The overall project cost was more like $260,000, because part of that was due to COVID too. But at least $175,000 of the stuff that was done near Riley Creek was paid for by ODOT. So yay!
Thank you. And it looks like the administrator put in the drop-in clinics for vaccines and testing. I don't know if you noticed, but there was a huge influx of COVID in the area, and there was nowhere to get tested because the hospital got overwhelmed. And they do that as a courtesy. They really are not our public health authority. The state is, and so the state has agreed to do some more tests, and the dates and times are in there. It's Tuesdays, 11 to 4, Wednesdays, 2 to 6:30 at the library for vaccines. And then drive-up testing is Mondays, 11 to 5, and Thursdays, 11 to 5 at the Great Health Foundation, which is across from the hospital. So, and if you ever need to have a question on something like that, you can always call 211, and they will have the most common, most common, most current information. But I know there was a lot of question about how do I get tested, where do I get tested, what do I do? Because I know what's going on, so. And it is my understanding that if you do have COVID, there are medicines out there, so check with your primary care physician if you are positive. Don't walk in, call, because they may have a protocol. So don't be tough, unless you have to be. Cool. With that, I'm going to close the meeting, but we do have a short executive session afterwards. Do we officially adjourn, or do we?
Yes, and, and actually, I don't know if, do, do we need to have the?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And I would like to ask the chief to stay, if that would be okay with you?
Yes.